such as New York to use your money to gain access to our local government, become our mayor's councilman, mayor pro tempus, so you can implement the same type of unconstitutional policies and ordinances like what you have in New York. Now, what I'm seeing sitting there on our city government over the past three years by using the color of law, you have all conspired to violate the civil rights of those of us who have had this as our home for our entire lives.
Constitutional violations by GPD Lieutenant Caldwell. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell is the Minister Society. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell is opening up the city of Galveston to multiple lawsuits. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell.
Rainbow Road. Every time I hear Rainbow Road, I think of Mario Kart. How many of y'all in the chats think the same thing? We're out here today in Galveston, Texas. To uh support Austin and Bruce and everybody that's been arrested out here and speak at the city council meeting. Everybody, uh, I didn't sign up to speak, but we do have several people that are here to speak today. And uh, so we'll see how it goes.
About safe. Hey concerned citizen, are you giving a speech too?
You coming Bruce? Come on. Alright. How you gentlemen doing today?
Good everyone.
Bless. Lester, how are you favored? Yeah, remember the don't go to the third floor? Yeah, last time they told us we're not allowed to go up those stairs. It's okay. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now at item six on our agenda. Council members of the conflicts of interest that any council member would like to. Here are no reply. We're gonna move to item six if we could please.
There's a doggie over here. There's a memorial over there. We got car seventeen twenty here. Dang, it's dirty. There's food in it. See what we can see while that city council meeting's going on, huh? Kinda just do a quick look around until it's public speaking time. Then I'll go and listen. Texas forensic associates. Dang, this one has got a wallet. That's not safe. One one two six nine eight five. K nine. Four three five is what's on the back, but I don't think there's a K nine. I think they all have that sticker. That's the Galveston Fire Department? Alright. I didn't see anything too suspicious. Let's look over here. Administration truck. That's pretty cool. The car started on its own. This is administration truck. See the scanners on the front, just running license plates all day. Just as they're driving. And if they go past anything that maybe they missed it by there with their eyes, boom, they get alerted. And the piracy begins. Keep my inside, make sure I don't miss uh excuse me, make sure I don't miss the public speaking.
But I wanted you to know that council and staff is monitoring and listening to these comments. And I would highly recommend, I have three forms here for individuals that want to speak. If there's anyone that wants to speak here in the audience, please get a form and fill that out so that we can make sure that we get your name and address and all that, so we can respond to you if necessary. I'm going to start first of all with Bruce Redmond.
Hello council.
Hello.
Um, I was here last month and we spoke about an incident. I kinda wanted to reiterate what it is that I do and what it is that I'm trying to accomplish here in the city with filming the police. We film these actions because it's become apparent that some things have slid through the cracks and aren't being videotaped with their body cameras and their dash cameras. And we need to stop the bad policing and promote the good policing. The good officers are out here trying to make change and trying to be of benefit to the society. So with that, you know, there's, there's some things that I talked about last time, like the, this public intoxication thing that's been used as basically a blanket arrest. It requires no evidence and also requires for somebody to be put in jail, but offers them no way to defend themselves. I would like to put forth a couple of things in front of this council. I would like to see a citizen committee to oversee body cameras, to, to look through this stuff that's elected, discerned in some way. I'm not talking about just throwing this stuff out there for everybody in the world, but this unredacted, so that we as citizens can watch what our public servants are doing and make sure that it's being taken care of properly. Arrest was recently taken and going through the live video, we found that over forty-two policy violations in one arrest. That's, that's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And violence towards people who have Class C amnesia and an arrest that by policy shouldn't have happened to begin with. Equipment is taken. Cell phones, you take away somebody's cellphone, I can't even get into my security footage of my property. I have multiple accounts that I can't even see. And so far as the PIs are concerned, what I would like to push for is people having the ability to take a breathalyzer when arrested for a PI. Simple as that, cost the city a dollar. But it creates transparency. They might stop and squash some of these arbitrary arrests. Thank you guys.
Nicholas Gilmore.
How you doing? Y'all know me, um, but I'm not new to Galveston. I had a great aunt and uncle that lived down on West Beach most of their life. If you ever got meat from Randall's, he was the butcher over there for many, many years, twenty-four, so. I grew up down here in Galveston fishing. I had an uncle that had a beach house in Tiki Island, okay? I love this place, but it was brought to my attention that Galveston started having issues with some of their police officers. That they had some really bad officers. Now me having family in law enforcement and friends, I couldn't believe what I was actually hearing. So I came down here personally myself and I witnessed firsthand with my very own eyes this past Friday morning. The tyranny, the lies, the cowardice. I mean, the list goes on and on, all off of one officer. Okay? The citizens of Galveston do not deserve to have somebody that has that kind of mental health crisis within himself protecting the streets of Galveston Island. They deserve that. This guy's literally on borderline sociopath and all that. Like I said, I, I didn't wanna believe that somebody, a law enforcement officer, would act and behave that way, but like I said, when I witnessed it firsthand myself, I felt the need that I needed to come and bring the state's attention. You know, like Bruce said, um, you know, falsely arresting somebody messes with that individual's mental health, okay? People rely on a good background to get good jobs, so on and such for it. Me personally, I have my license to carry. I don't have any convictions on my record. Okay? And for me to be, to have been treated the way that I was treated by simply walking or standing on a sidewalk was absolutely positively ridiculous. This is a tourist city. People are lining the streets on, um, for Mardi Gras up and down the seawall, and I don't see Galveston PD arresting every single person standing on the sidewalk. But this is what one bad officer wants to do. Y'all need to remove it.
Thank you. Bobby Kennedy, remember Bobby?
Alright, first I'm gonna tell y'all what I'm facing staying on. It's gonna sting, it's gonna hurt. Or y'all gonna hate me when I get down here, okay? But I gotta speak what I feel is the truth, okay? This is my disclaimer, this is my personal opinion and uh, my speculation of the truth, okay? My name is Bobby Dick Kennedy. I'm a citizen of the city of Galveston so long now, I actually attended Goliath Elementary. Well, it used to be on Thirty First and around Avenue K and through Avenue M. I was here before the San Luis Hotel on Fort Crockett was here, just to let you know that this is my home long before the majority of you even came here from other places such as New York to use your money to gain access to our local government, become our mayor's councilman, mayor pro tempus, so you can implement the same type of unconstitutional policies and ordinances like what you have in New York. Now, what I'm seeing sitting there on our city government over the past three years by using the color of law, you have all conspired to violate the civil rights of those of us who have had this as our home for our entire lives. It is and has been your political agenda under the leadership of Mayor Craig Brown and our city manager Brian Maxwell, to use unconstitutional ordinances to violate the civil rights of lifelong working class citizens of the city of Galveston in an attempt to force us to sell out to the filthy rich, to get rid of what you consider to be in your minds the undesirable, to create a filthy rich playground for the filthy rich and the tourists only. You want the working class to work, that work for under twenty-eight thousand dollars a year to live across the causeway on the mainland, and you are using your peace officers and police officers to, that you start out at fifty-eight thousand on up to hundred and twenty thousand a year to further that political agenda. Now what is the definition of a Gestapo? Okay? Now, you actually went as far as firing what I think was one of the best chiefs that the Galveston Police Department has ever seen, Chief Haines, because he refused to participate in your political agenda by enforcing unconstitutional ordinances. What you first hired Bruce Stroud to do, and he did it, but he no longer does because he don't need to, because you now have hired Chief Doug Valley, who not only agreed to enforce these unconstitutional ordinances, but he's actually ordering and allowing his commanding officers and his officers to enforce these illegal ordinances. You all know that the working man that works for a living can't really afford your court system, so they usually just pay fines and end up selling and moving on, giving you all what you want. Now, the arrest made by Lieutenant Caldwell on three seventeen twenty twenty-three after about one forty-five in the AM is a prime example. Uh, let's just go straight to the rest of Mr. Bruce Redmond, okay? Whom I know one hundred percent was not drunk, nor had he had a drink of alcohol that entire day. So he is doing nothing more than standing on sidewalk engaging in a constitutionally protected activity when he was assaulted and accosted by one Lieutenant Joe Caldwell of the Galveston Police Department for doing nothing. As a fact, Lieutenant Caldwell illegally ordered Mr. Redmond to leave for no other reason than the fact that Lieutenant Caldwell wants no transparency, and he was being filmed in the course of his duty to ensure accountability and safety for all, not just for the cop, but for the citizen as well. You say blue eyes matter. What about our lives? Who is protecting we, the people? The only protection a citizen has from the murderous police officer is the civilian camera in the hands of them like Mr. Redmond. But I digress and I am sorry. At the time Lieutenant Caldwell unlawfully ordered Mr. Redmond to leave, Mr. Redmond replied by saying, sir, I'm only, I'm not doing anything. I'm just standing here on the sidewalk. At what time Lieutenant Caldwell replied with an evil wicked grin on his face, that is right. You're just standing on the sidewalk.
Mr. Kennedy, excuse me, we expired to three minutes, but go ahead. Can you finish? Go ahead and wrap that up if you would mind, sir.
I got just a few seconds here real quick, okay? Okay? So anyway, that's right, you're just standing on the sidewalk. You can't do that. You're under arrest for impeding the sidewalk. This is what the man was arrested for, okay? He then goes on and makes up lies and falsely accuses Mr. Redmond of being drunk. What Caldwell has done and been doing to many of our citizens, he is a liar and he has a very low moral turpitude. And uh, he has no business being a police officer, much less a supervisor lieutenant. And while I appreciate them trying to stop the harassing of our citizens, being bullied with badges is not gonna cut it. He was told to get off the sidewalk and he didn't do it, so he was arrested. But if you stand in the street, you get arrested. Where is the freedom or even the right to care? Caldwell is out of control and he needs to be fired last month, not next week, not today, not next year. He needs to be fired last month.
Mr. Kennedy, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry your time is up, sir.
Alright. I told y'all I hate whatever y'all done. I have my personal opinion.
Fire Caldwell.
I have a, um, form filled out. There's no name. It just says good citizen here. I'm not sure.
They brought this attention on themselves, bro.
Are you the good citizen, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Austin Lewis. I'm the owner operator of Fizzless News and I'm the owner of CNN. Last month, I summarized how Caldwell attacked, tased, maced, and maced Bruce Redmond. I also informed you of my arrest by Caldwell, by Lieutenant Joel Caldwell for interference on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-two. On March seventeenth twenty twenty-three, Lieutenant Joel Caldwell arrested me for impeding a sidewalk and disorderly conduct. All we did was photograph and video the police. We actually were threatened by a man across the street who threatened to come quote, whoop our ass. Always, uh, yeah, okay, always uh, when Caldwell arrested me, he twisted the cuffs to cause pain. I had to go to the hospital after I got out of the jail. He also broke my recording equipment and after, uh, and after he cuffed me, uh, after cu- uh, yeah, he, after cuffing compliant, he drags me across the street to order the arrest of another photographer. That was Nicholas Gilmore out there. It was at this point I told Caldwell to keep, uh, uh, to not keep tweaking my wrists upwards, causing extreme pain. At the truck, I'm thrown against the hood to be frisked and another cameraman starts to video me, um, yeah, thrown up against the hood and frisked, and as the other cameraman, another cameraman starts to video, it, Caldwell grabs me by my hair and drags me around the back of the truck, still applying upward pressure on my wrists and hands in pain. He throws me up against the bed of the truck, kicks my legs repeatedly out from underneath me. He repeats, he repeat, uh, he proceeds to then smash my head downwards against the bed of the truck. And as the cameraman comes across, uh, so you can see from the cab and you can see over the bed, he then lifts my head back up, shoves me in the crack between the toolbox and the cab, and then throws me into the vehicle. I can't even get my legs in the vehicle before he slams my foot in the door, causing extreme pain and numbness twice before he finally gets my foot out of the door and closes it. Or I'm able to get it in, I should say. Uh, yeah, quite, quite some, okay. I requested medical attention. None ever came. People from the outside who saw this happen live requested medical. Caldwell called it off. I wonder why. Maybe it's because he didn't want pictures taken or the evidence of the quarter inch gouges in both of my wrists and arms. Maybe it was for my numb foot, or maybe he just doesn't care. Well, here are some facts that we counted at least thirty to forty different policy violations by Officer, well, Lieutenant Caldwell. Uh, out of the GPD policy manual. Some are city regulations, some are controlled by the state and federal laws. So Caldwell doesn't care about the policy and apparently state or federal law. He needs to be fired.
Very good. Did we have some written comments, uh, Janelle?
We do. We have twelve already.
You could read those, please.
Patricia Fodor, pass a law to keep the First Amendment auditors from harassing people. Hi, can you pass a law under state to keep the First Amendment auditors from going into police stations, the federal buildings and City Hall, as all they do is hang ads, the good hardworking people for videos so they can make money on YouTube? Next is from Mad American. On March seventeenth, Lieutenant Caldwell made three arrests on live streams. The arrests were made as impeding a sidewalk while people were blocking on the sidewalk. I'm not sure what this officer was thinking, but he violated the rights of these individuals. He used excessive force on one citizen, injuring his head, wrist and foot. Did he file paperwork for use of excessive force? How despicable this officer is to arrest individuals practicing their rights on a private sidewalk. These are rights violations, unreal. Next is from Fire, Fire Caldwell. Constitutional violations by GPD Lieutenant Caldwell. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell is the Minister Society. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell is opening up the city of Galveston to multiple lawsuits. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell seems to believe he has carte blanche to do as he wishes when interacting with the public. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell is a walking civil rights violating sociopath. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Lieutenant Caldwell violates GPD policies for hiding people he arrests in a juvenile holding cell at GPD. Fire Lieutenant Caldwell. Next is from We the People. Regards to Officer Caldwell. City council needs to immediately remove and charge Caldwell for multiple excessive force arrests, illegal detainments, and violations of civil rights under the color of law. We the people will not stand for this public servant harassing and abusing us anymore. And the last one is from Carolyn Rodriguez. Mayor, I spoke to her on the phone earlier today and she was gonna be here after six o'clock. I'm not sure if she's here yet, but she-
She's walking in right now.
There she is. There she is.
Carolyn Rodriguez?
Oh Carolyn, how are you guys? Okay, so, um, I'm here to talk to you about the police department, of course. And, um, anything I might say might not, probably won't change anything, but at least it'll be on record for you to understand what's going on. And I just wanna let y'all know that just because they have that uniform on, that doesn't mean they're the good guys. So, I was looking at your data. And you learn a lot by, by data. I don't know if any of you guys read data, but you can just infer a lot from it. So here you have a hundred and forty-one officers and that's thirty cops per ten thousand people. There's so, that's more than ninety-six percent of all other police departments in Texas. So what can you infer from that number? Being that it has, you guys have so many. What can you infer from that? What can you, what can you infer from that? If ninety-eight percent of the people walking here with umbrellas, what can you infer? That it's raining outside? Well, with this number I'm telling you right now, that means you're spending a lot on, um, the budget for them. So they're making tons of salary. They have all kinds of little, little toys that they can play with. They have, you're spending a lot of money on them. But what you're not spending money on is, um, like, um, extra education for them because they're not deescalating the situations. They're just making them worse. And how do I know that? Because seventy-nine, eighty, I'm sorry, eighty percent of your arrests here were for low level offenses, which means that de-escalation could have been used, but probably wasn't because that number's really, really high. So at the academy, they're taught to make sure that their subject complies. And they think that just by walking up to the situation and them wearing a uniform should make people comply, right? But they're allowed to abuse any kind of force to make that person comply. They can chase them, they can punch them in the face, they can knock them down, they can put their knee on their neck, all sorts of force to make that person comply. So, um, that needs to change. Another thing I noticed was that seventeen percent of the Galveston population is black. Seventeen percent. But thirty-six percent of your arrests are done on black people. What does that mean? What could that, what could you infer from that? Could you infer that maybe black people commit more crimes? Could that be? I don't think so. I think that there's some kind of racism going on around here just by that number. You can call me crazy, but about five years ago, you had two fellows that were, um, filming the police department. One was black, one was white. And even though they were both doing the same crime- And even though they were both doing the same crime, filming in the police department, only the black guy got arrested. I wonder why that happened? Okay, and then that officer got in trouble because that person did not have to identify who he was because they did not have reasonable or technical suspicion of a crime. So he didn't identify himself, but what they did was they took his little clicker app, of the, of the, the stuff that Dan collected off of him, and they went around to find his car with that clicker. And his dash cam caught them going through his car.
Man, excuse me, we have three minutes in you.
What's your timer?
It just, uh-
Okay, well, I guess that's all I have to say, but I think you guys really need to do something about your police because they're, they're pretty punkish. Start having, start having, you know, go to the law library instead of firing range. You know, stay out of the black neighborhoods, put rest on all black people.
Thank you.
Was that the last speaker?
Any other comments that you have, Janell? Alright. Very good. I'm gonna close the public comment section of our agenda and let's move to item ten A.
Item ten A, Consider For Approval And Orders Of The City Of Galveston, Texas Amending The Code Of The City Of Galveston nineteen eighty-two as amended, Chapter Twenty-Six, Parks And Recreation, Article Three. Park Order Trustees Commending The Appointment Terms To Begin On May First And Appointment Terms To End On April thirtieth, A Week's Term, Respectfully Making Various Findings And Provisions Related To The Subject. Ready For An Effective Date.
Okay, very good. Thank you. This is an item that was put on. We had discussed this a little bit this morning.
It's so funny, you're talking about Philip Turner and they don't even know, they don't even know who the hell they're talking about. Seventy-five thousand dollars they had to pay out to Philip Turner for arresting that black man. Yeah, yeah. We see the problem and we, it's good, and because they keep pushing friction back on us, we're growing and growing because the people are seeing it, because we're publishing them live on the internet, live on the internet, so they can't stop us. It's already on there.
They arrested three of us on last Friday morning at one AM. They brought back seven.
Yeah, they can't, like, and every time, every time they try to cut the head off this snake, we're gonna go three more, you know? Because we're here for the people. Well, the best part is because you can do, you can do public comment, you can do public comment, and you can make these cowards read what needs to happen, you know what I'm saying? Instead of, I don't even have to get up there and speak. I can just type, 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 enter. Type, 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 enter, you know what I'm saying? And you get five hundred characters per complaint. So you can file a complaint in this name, file a complaint in this name, file a complaint in this name, and you can keep them reading all day. Like, my friend, they- Hey, where's the link to file, to type in the complaints?
Uh, it's on the website.
On the Galveston website?
Yeah. And if you wanna have your friends also comment, anything-
Send a great message to everybody. Go complain to these people about this.